Okay, it is Tuesday, one December, 2015, at 7:03 PM. I'd like to call the regular Board of Trustees meeting to order. And for invocation, I would like everyone to join me in praying for the families and of the people that have lost loved ones in Paris, in Colorado again, Chicago, and throughout the country. There's evil among us, and we pray at this time of year, this time of peace, that they find some peace and solitude in the season, and we pray that they take a rest so that we can get back to some normalcy for the year. Roll call, please.
Justice Head, absent. Nelson, absent. O'Brien, Burgland.
Here.
Pike.
Here.
Stanifer, absent. President Wecken.
Here.
Trustee Zappa.
Here.
Thank you. Item number two is review of approved minutes from the regular board meeting of November 3rd, 2015.
I'll move to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting of November 3rd, 2015.
Thank you, Colleen. Second, thank you. Is there any amendments or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, signal as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's passed. Item number three is comments from the floor. Opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topics, issues, opportunities either on or not on today's agenda. Would you please step up to the podium, state your name and address, please? Don't have to move fast. We're not on a speed meeting. Really.
John Christopher Barker. I live at 202 Lakeview Drive in North Hudson. We had the turnaround put in at the end of the road, and as of, well, yesterday, I had more cars turning around in my driveway than the actual turnaround. Is there anything that we can put on the agenda to get a sign or something pointing towards the turnaround instead of my driveway? One day I had 16 cars turn around in my driveway.
Seriously?
Because everybody's coming down to look at the money spent on the turnaround.
It's not really something we can resolve tonight, but you could move into a public safety or something like that?
Yeah, we can, well, we have, there is some discussion with the project that is, you know, continuing. We didn't, we're not going to give them all the money back, but yeah, we can add that to Public Works and/or, you know, public safety. I think Public Works first, and you can, you know, come and address that there. Hopefully, the novelty will wear off.
I'm hoping so.
You know, it's, yeah, I was, I don't know how you'd miss that, because, I mean, I was just down there this evening and turned around in the Hammerhead, so, but thank you for-
Well, like, yeah, yesterday I had, driveway was all packed down, and I look over and there's one set of tracks in the turnaround. I'm like, you gotta be kidding me, people.
Well, if we put a sign that said turnaround in your driveway, then they'd probably use the Hammerhead.
Then they would probably use the turnaround. I mean, I did put up the sign that I had previously saying private, no turnaround. I did put that back up last night, so hopefully that'll somewhat help.
Well, I gotta guess it's gonna cut back a little bit here.
Well, I'm hoping so.
I mean, you don't normally get that much down the end of that street, I'm assuming.
No.
In the summer, we do. There's a lot of out-of-towners making wrong turns.
Minnesota plates that come down there.
They don't read that dead end.
Go through, yeah.
Yeah, one guy's like, this doesn't go through? Well, no, at the top of the street, it says dead end. They think it goes all the way down to Riverside Drive.
Right.
So.
They're trying to run through the police, that's why. No, seriously, they are.
Well, they're coming to the wrong house, then.
Not a good spot, but, well, thank you for that, and, you know, like I said, we'll put it in Public Works. We'll put it on there so we can do that. Terry, anything? You're just here for, you had nothing else better to do tonight?
I'm doing a break.
All right. Let's see, I don't see anyone else's comments, and I see the judges here, and I'm gonna change the order a little bit so we can get settled in and stuff before we go to the budget. So I'm gonna go to item six, revised uniform misdemeanor bail schedule approval requested. And if we get a motion in a second, then Ben can tell us what's going on.
I'll move approval.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian.
It's been accepted, so I don't want to make any comments.
Judge, huh?
It's been accepted, so I don't want to make any comments.
Well, it's moved and seconded. We haven't voted yet, so just, if you'd just give the board a little background on why you're-
We're trying to get Stan to follow proper parliamentary procedure.
I'm not real good at it, you know, I mean, following any procedures.
The statute, 800-037, indicates that the municipal judge periodically should look at the bond schedule, forfeiture schedule, and propose any changes to the village board, and the village board has a final authority on approving those. And this was last done in June of 2013, so it's been a little over two and a half years, or roughly two and a half years, since the last change was made to the bond schedule. I've gone through the schedule, basically trying to update a little bit, looking at some of the more serious violations, ones like open container vehicles and open container, and raise those a little bit. Number of them were raised from the minimum, which for moving violations, $30. The range is from $30 to $300. For non-moving violations, the range is from $0 to $200. We typically have been at the very bottom, and I raised those a little bit with one goal in mind, and that was to get some of the lowest ones up by $10 to bring them over the $100 mark, because then that makes them eligible for collection under the State Debt Collection Act. And the State Debt Collection Act has a lot more authority than we do have in getting information regarding employment, garnishing wages, bringing levies against a person's assets, and we sometimes use a tax intercept. They also have the tax intercept, but their priorities are higher than even the tax intercept. So it would be a real advantage to us to be able to turn this over to the Department of Revenue when we have citations that have not been fulfilled, forfeitures that haven't been paid, and they can pursue them. They have an initial fee of $20 plus 15% of the amount, but that's added on to the forfeiture, so the village collects 100% of the forfeiture, and the additional amount has to be paid by the person who received the citation and hasn't paid it. One of the things that they do is they send out a letter in advance notifying people that this is going to happen and the additional charges, and that results in using a lot of voluntary payment of the forfeitures. Our warrant program, we would still continue to use on Minnesota residents, because we don't have any real clout through the Department of Revenue to collect from Minnesota defendants. We still can use the arrest program on them, and if, in fact, they are picked up in Wisconsin, we still probably would collect from them. We have, as of the end of 2014, 61 outstanding warrants for, I think, 137 citations that were unsatisfied at that time. But the arrest program has resulted in collecting about $58,000 since we put it into effect in 2007, so we don't want to totally forego that, but we want to use it more with greater discretion and use the Debt Collection Act and let the Department of Revenue take a lot of these actions if they can. And they indicated their cutoff is $100. So they've been very active in trying to sign up courts to become part of their program. They've been working very heavily with the university systems and collecting multiple million dollars for unpaid tuition, so they've been very successful. They gave a nice lecture at the last Judges Conference, and I think it's something that we definitely want to move towards, and if you adopt this program or this bond schedule, then we can have a lot of these forfeitures that are unpaid referred to Department of Revenue for collection action.
Sounds like a great deal to me. I wished you would have raised the abandoned vehicle violation one little more, but I know we are also held accountable as to how much we can raise. We can't just pick arbitrary numbers.
Do you have anybody in mind with abandoned vehicle?
No, I'm not, not, no, I do not. It's just, you know, there's, every once in a while, they show up, and it'd be nice to be able to take care of that problem, but-
I have a quick question, just, Ben, how do you, what's this cents for, like, 11, 1111 and 40 cents, 50 cents?
That comes out of the bond schedule after you add in all the additional charges. So there's a jail surcharge, there's an automation surcharge. Some violations carry a surcharge for $435 in case of a DUI, and then the state this year added another $50 charge for a safe-driving charge. That we have to collect, it all goes to the state. But those all come under the percentage, like, if you take a $40 fine, there's a 26% surcharge on that.
Okay.
At the standard.
All right, I got you.
So that's how you get to those odd numbers.
I got you. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else got a question for the judge? Hearing none. All in favor of the judge's recommendation for the increase in uniform misdemeanor bail schedule? Signal five as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Ben.
Good, thank you.
You have a great evening, and I don't see you. Have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll go back to 2016 proposed budget. If we could have a, I guess I'll open the public hearing. And, motion for that?
You know, not officially, so you could-
Okay, I declare the-
... our ordinance calls for it.
Yeah, the proposed budget open public hearing is now open at 7:15, and our administrator has a presentation on the proposed budget, so Gloria.
Well, last month, we posted or published our proposed budget in the newspaper, and this will be our final, our final budget. There hasn't been any changes since our publication, and this would set our levy, our property tax levy, at $1,556.61. You guys have all seen this budget sheet before, the revenues, the expenses, and the different funds and balances was the same document that we viewed last month. But just to summarize some of the highlights, the increase in the village tax levy is a little less than 2.43 over last year's levy. The state revenue and transportation aid remained constant with the 2000, or consistent with the 2015 limits, so there wasn't any major decreases or increases from the state as far as transportation aid or revenue. The health insurance increase of 9.5, I believe last month, I may have misspoke and said 5.5, was offsetted by increase in employees' required contribution amount from 15 to 20%. And this budget included a 2% pay increase for represented and non-represented employees. There was a 50 cent per capita increase to the EMS contract. No capital projects were included in the 2016 budget, and then there was $37, or $1,000 that was budgeted from undesignedated funds for the purchase of the police squad car, and $10,000 to reserve for the purchase of, future purchase of a Public Works truck. An additional 2% increase above the required three-year average for the Hudson-area joint library was also included with that budget. What you're looking at now is the mill rate worksheet comparison. It shows 13, 14, and 15, and shows what the state, county, village, school district, and WITC, what their tax levy amounts are for the village of North Hudson. The village's mill rate is at 4.51. However, there were increases pretty much across the board. Thankfully, the school credit from the state was larger than it has been, so it's offset that a little bit, and so the overall mill rate is going to be 16.29% per thousand of assessed value. What this shows is what our projected year-end will be for our revenues for 2015 and our adopted budget for '16. It also has 2014 actuals, and we're anticipating about $92,000 to the good. Which of that will be used for those, to reserve for the Public Works truck, and it will help offset the squad car and the voting equipment that we need to purchase. And this is the document that we will be sending to the county shortly after our meeting in order for them to get started on their tax statements, but it divides up all the mill rates and the credits and equalized value. It shows what the aids are from the state and what our assessed values are. And what this shows is allocation of our property tax with the, about 50% going to the Hudson School District, and probably a little less than a quarter to the county and to the village, and the other smaller proponents are the state of Wisconsin and WITC. Do you have any questions?
Hearing none. I would like to thank you, Gloria, and the rest of the staff for the amount of work that it's, the budget is never an easy one to do, especially with increases in, you know, anything but affordable care and things like that. We, it's never easy, and, you know, in the village, we really have tried, you know, we're trying to, you know, maintain the level of service that we have right now. I mean, not, there's no extravagant increases there. It's replacing vehicles that are, are, you know, past, you know, almost past their shelf life, or, and we're, you know, I would like to thank you again for the efforts that you are doing. Everybody is done. So, that's the public comments. Are there any comments? Hearing none. I will declare the public hearing closed, and we will move to item fi, or, well, no, it's the resolution for the 2015-11, adopting the 2016 annual village budget and establishing the tax levy approval request.
Stan, I'll move.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Any further discussion? And since we need a supermajority, or a two-thirds majority, thank you, Kirk, you can start.
Yes.
And I will say yes.
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 And we have the two-thirds majority and unanimous approval of the 2016 annual village budget. Thank you, everyone. Item number seven, 2016 mobile home park license. Pamela Zappa, approval requested. We have a motion.
I make a motion to approve the 2016 mobile home trailer park permit for Pamela Zappa.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Kirk. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of approval of the home park license? Signal five as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous decision. Number eight, election inspector appointments for 2016, 2017 term, approval requested.
Stan, can I move to appoint the following Republican and Democratic election inspectors: Meredith Berg, Betty Goodman, Margaret Webb, Sandra Wayland, Carol Whirl, Nancy Walls, Jolene Mayer, Joyce Law, Catherine Long, Cecilia Phillips, Cheryl Anderson, Randy Los, Karen Crowley, John Borup, Jennifer Borup, Mary Ann Hanley, Jean Schneider, Margaret Woolpat, Sandra Lutke, Mary Kay Hunt, Deb Monakin, Kathy Roberts, John Crisick, Karen Novotny, and Carol Harden for the term of January 1, 2016, to December 31, 2017.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Any discussion? All in favor, signal five as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, next item is new business from the board or staff versus president's comments. The president's comments is, I've been thankful that we haven't had any serious snow yet. Little issue yesterday, but as a reminder to the folks, we do have a parking ordinance for, to move your vehicles within 24 hours. We do not have a snow emergency parking ordinance yet. It is being discussed. I would hope that folks can move their vehicles. It saves the village money by not having to come back and replow if we've got a lot of cars that sit in the street. If, you know, I mean, it'd be great if we could have, like, pick, you know, like, a lot of places do odd-even, you know, if they're gonna be a snow event, maybe we do, you know, I mean, you know, pick the odd side of the street, even side of the street is a voluntary thing, so that, you know, there's a lot of places that don't, you can't, you know, park in the yards or whatever, I mean, the older part of town, but so I know we've got issues there, but if you, anything you can do to help us with that, it'd be great. And the other part is, when you're shoveling your driveways and stuff, as much as I know everybody, when the plows plow them in, they want to throw it back into the street, so it, and it's not, it's against village ordinance, I believe, to be throwing snow and other, you know, stuff into the streets, so please shovel it onto the boulevards. I know this stuff, the last couple days was very heavy and hard to throw at all, so, but if you could help us out with that, it'd be, would be much appreciated by our Public Works Department, I'm sure. And the other thing, let's see, I'd like to say happy Hanukkah, and I hope everyone has a blessed and safe Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Gloria.
No comments at this time.
Okay, and Melissa?
I have one thing. Individuals interested in getting on the ballot for the spring election can pick up the paperwork from me. Today is the first day to circulate nomination papers. The deadline to file all paperwork with me is 5 o'clock PM on Tuesday, January 5, 2016. The spring election will be on Tuesday, April 5, 2016.
Thank you very much. Okay, next item is plan commission. Plan commission did not meet. And then item 11, Personnel and Finance Committee recommendations. First one is claims, including the 2015 capital project pay request number three.
Stan, can I move to approve the December 2015 non-recurring claims of $89,531.74, please?
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Any further discussion? And that's paying the bills, so, Brian?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Thank you. B is use of unassigned funds for current and future purchases, approval requested.
Stan, may I move to authorize village administrator to use $12,800 from the unassigned fund balance for the purchase of voting equipment and a skid loader? Additionally, transfer $10,000 to Public Works Truck Assigned Fund, and $3,000 into the General Government Capital Improvements Fund for the unassigned fund balance.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Is there any questions or discussion? And we're spending money here, so Kirk?
Yep.
Yes.
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 Thank you. 2016 Buildings Inspector zoning administrator contract, Brian Word, approval requested.
Stan, can I move approval of the new contract with the building inspector and his zoning administrator?
Thank you, Mark.
Would you please add authorizing?
Correct, yeah, authorize the, authorize the administrator to sign the contract.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Covers everything for that. Any questions? Comments? Okay, let's see, it's contracts, so all in favor, signal as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. 2016 North Hudson staff and equipment service rates, approval requested.
Can I move to approve the 2016 service rates for the village of North Hudson?
Thank you, Mark. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Kirk. Is any questions or discussion? Let's see, okay, all in favor of the increase, or the new rate changes? Signal five as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, and E is authorization to hire one full-time Public Works employee, approval requested.
Can I move approval, Stan?
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. And the approval, was, is that for the Public Works Director to hire the?
Yes.
Okay. Melissa, did you get that? Okay, so when we have 15 candidates, and when we pick, when we pick the right person, we will, he will hopefully get him on this month to help with the snow plowing and get him up to speed for, because eventually winter will hit, I'm pretty sure. That's all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Next is Public Works Committee recommendations, chair update. The chair is absent, out of town. Brian, you-
Well, we have two items, the skid loader exchange approval, and we're recommending exchanging the village of North Hudson's 2013 New Holland L223 skid loader for a new 2015 New Holland L220 skid loader from value implement at a cost not to exceed $5,500.
I'll second.
Thank you, thank you, Mark. Any other questions with this? That's a purchase of a skid loader, so, Brian?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Thank you, and?
And the second item that we have is an extension of the Public Works garage lease for one year, and we're recommending to extend the current garage lease with Zappa Development for one year at the current rate of $32.50 a month.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Any questions? I'll just make a comment, and this is, the village is fortunate to have the lease at the same rate as last year. We're looking into possibly purchasing that property, and, and then it would be ours and not paying rent on it every, every month, so that's, you know, that's a goal, but with appraisals and stuff, it's taken some time, so we will hopefully get that done in the new year. Let's see, that's the lease. All in favor of extending the lease for one more year, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
I abstain.
Next item is public safety.
We have two action items, Stan. The first is approve the, my little thing went dead, approve the installation of an LED on the 400 block of Helen Street North.
500?
500 block, I'm sorry.
It says 400 on the-
Which one are we?
Yeah, well, that one.
500 approved.
The 500 block.
Oh, I'm on the wrong one?
Yeah, the 400's out.
It's not the pole, there's a pole that's already- It's not the pole. There's a, a pole that's already, it's going to be used. It's, um, installing an additional light in an area. That's, we've had two requests for it. Mark can elaborate if necessary, or if you'd like to.
Motion's been, made the motion and.
Second.
Called and seconded, so.
Just for the record, uh, it passed, uh, the recommendation passed for public safety. This was an item, the five hundred block of Helen Street North has been an issue for a period of time. We had our first request back in March, or public works did, back in March of two thousand and twelve, prior to any changes to the, the lighting, uh, the physical lighting on the streets out there. And so it was a request. It had fallen through a few cracks along the way and was, um, brought back up again in September of this year by the residents in, at the five hundred, or five hundred and fourteen Helen Street North. And so Sergeant Voles did go out and do some assessment of the lighting and, and whatnot. Um, there is a curvature in the road there and XL Energy, um, part of their program is to try to use the lighting to assist with, uh, kind of more dangerous areas of the streets or areas that, uh, they wanna bring attention to to make sure that people, uh, can operate safely. They're not meant for a security purpose, although sometimes they double as that, uh, without the intent. They, they are helpful for that. Uh, but this request was made prior to any of the changes in the LED lighting. And so the public works committee had recommended approval and the police department supports that.
Thank you, Mark. Is there any questions for the chief? Hearing done. We have a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Second item is, uh, I'll make the motion, move to authorize the sale of the two thousand eight Ford Police Interceptor. The purchase of the two thousand sixteen Ford Explorer from Hudson Ford and the purchase, installation and removal of equipment to outfit the squads in an amount not to exceed thirty-seven thousand from the undesignated fund in two thousand sixteen.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Colleen. Is, uh, any discussion? And that, did I hear two thousand eight was the last, we were replacing a two thousand eight?
That's correct.
Okay, and, uh, the Ford Explorer, so we'll have, it's, if we do get our snowstorms and stuff like that, this one will be ready to go and, uh, and, uh, help us out for, for that, so. And I believe that the last time we purchased a vehicle, it was the, these vehicles, they, they're, with all the equipment that you all have to carry or have in the vehicles, uh, the new sedans and stuff really don't hold them and allow you to be able to, uh, put, uh, fenders in the backseat?
There are some issues with, uh, with spacing and I can tell you from the sergeant's experience, uh, transporting, cause he's the one assigned to the current Ford Explorer, uh, he's found it much more beneficial for, I guess, comfort, uh, for those people that are being transported, although that's not our initial intent. Uh, it definitely does assist with, with that and moving them in and out of the car.
Thank you. Okay, with no other questions or comments, and that's a purchase, Kirk?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And at the end is public safety, public welfare, Colleen?
Public welfare and public, your park board did not meet.
Thank you. And, uh, item sixteen is, Mark?
Move to adjourn, Stan.
Thank you, I'll second that. And we'll be adjourned at seven thirty-six.